Yes, so I just thought that it, given how much work the election was this year, how important it was this year, a really crucial thing for us to do is to acknowledge Elaine Davis, our registrar. She's been Camden's registrar since 1989.
Wow.
She was basically like a volunteer, full-time employee over the last, I'd say, pretty much month. She put in a tremendous amount of work. She's one of those unsung heroes of the town where if we didn't have someone like Elaine putting in all this time and effort, things just wouldn't function as smoothly as they do. So, a big thank you to Elaine. Everybody should be so appreciative in Camden of all the work that Elaine does for us. So, if Elaine is watching, and she probably isn't, and I completely understand if she isn't, just thank you so much on behalf of the town. You're invaluable, and we all just respect you and appreciate you so much.
Absolutely. Thanks so much, Audra. And applause for Elaine's help. I'm glad, hopefully, other people will hear the hard work that has to go in to put together a successful election, which we've done twice now this year, and Herculean amount of votes and...
I saw her register a group of new voters, you know, 20, 30 minutes before the polls closed. She got them through. You know, she does it. She does it efficiently. She does it correctly, and she's just so much fun to have around, too.
Great. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll commence our agenda. The first item is public input on non-agenda items. There is one note from a resident in our packet, and I will read it since you requested it be read. And quote, "I would like to know why the town of Camden is using Tenerife Park as a staging area for heavy equipment storage and piles of dirt after pledging in 2017 that it would not do this again. My personal guess is the powers that be decided to just go ahead without notice and do what they wanted. Those who oppose would have to find money for a lawyer to take legal action. The project would be near completion before anything would get to court. Please tell me what the real scenario was, and the plans are in progress to change the equipment, et cetera, away from a neighborhood." And that is from Nina Holland. Thank you, Nina. That was the only comment, I believe, we had. Is that correct, Janice?
That's it, yeah.
Is that correct, Janice?
What's that?
The answer is yes. I know it is. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for a liquor extension for 16 Bayview Inn. Normally, in our public hearings, I would remind everybody that the purpose of the public hearing is to allow the public to provide input for the select board's edification on the matter at hand. And there's a bunch of criteria to go with that. But since I know we have no public input this evening, I will terminate any public input and revert to select board deliberation. The application is in our packet. This is for, as it says, 16 Bayview. I know the property they're extending to. It was most recently a pizza place. And they're looking for a liquor extension for a start date of 12/1/20. Are there any questions or comments from the select board? Mr. Ratner?
Oh, Mark's muted.
Oh, you're muted.
Mark, unmute, please. Good boy.
How's that?
That's good.
I've looked at the packet. What it looks like to me is they're looking to take into their own operation the restaurant formerly known as Fresh. Is that correct?
No. No, no, Mark. It's formerly Fireside Pizza.
It's which one?
Fireside Pizza. It was Paulina's Way at one point.
Oh, right, right. Oh, the one downstairs. Okay. Got it. Okay. Just curious which one it was. Okay, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I just, it's confusing. I just happened to recognize the footprint of it. That's why I knew it was that one. And it is immediately adjacent to the hotel.
Right, and it's part of the same building.
Yeah, exactly. Any other questions or comments? Jenna, Taylor?
Glad to see it getting used.
Yep. Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for extension of liquor license for Bayview Street in LLC to add the adjacent restaurant space that they own into the operation of 16 Bayview Street.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. I'll go for roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Marco?
Aye.
And Bob also. 4-0. Thank you. One second. Have to admit, one more person.
There's Allison.
There she is. And Janice, will you correct the...
You're muted.
Yeah, she is. Janice, will you correct the host thing for me? Where's Janice? I lost Janice.
I think she's working on it.
Okay.
Looks like she is.
I think we lost her, didn't we?
Yeah, I was waiting for like five minutes for somebody to let me in.
Yeah, that's my bad. Janice, will you correct the co-host thing for me? Janice, you're not coming. Janice, I can't hear you.
We're not hearing you, Janice.
Still can't hear you.
I think your speaker's off, Janice.
You're muted. You're...
Or microphone's off or something.
It shows microphone on. Huh.
No, maybe it's probably on our computer.
Audra, can you just text her, have her change the co-host to Allison, please?
Okay.
Yeah?
Sorry about that. We just addressed the liquor license for the extension of 16 Bayview, and we did a roll call 4-0. Did you want to make a comment on that before I closed the hearing?
No, I feel good about it unless you guys all talked about something that I should know.
No, everybody was in abject favor of it. Thank you, Allison. And I'm sorry, it was my bad for not getting you in sooner.
No, that's, that's fine. I'm having computer troubles as well.
All right. Well, we'll keep rolling on to item three of our agenda, which is the approval of the board medias for minutes for October 20th, 2020. Are there any comments or corrections on those minutes, please? Mark, Jenna, Allison, go ahead.
The only thing I saw that jumped right out at me was the "Howl" bowl was written "Howl" in one place, so "Snow Bowl" should be, or "Snow," I think it said "Snow Howell" somewhere.
It's a typo?
Yes, just a typo.
Okay. That's cool. Any other comments? Mark?
I had a comment. At one point, we were talking about the snow bowl, and I said something about, let me find it. I'm sorry, I should have had this pulled up.
Sure.
I can't find it. It was just, the description of what I said was a little odd, but it's okay. It doesn't make any difference. So, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
With the one typo that Allison mentioned.
Correct.
Second.
Any motion made and seconded? Any discussion? Not seeing any hands. I'll go for roll call vote. Jenna? Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, 5-0. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is item four, which is our consent agenda. Tonight, we have just one item, which is the renewal of the lodging and vitre license for 16 Bayview Inn, Camden Windward House, Drift Oceanside Inn, Frenny's Bistro, and Town Motel.
Bob, I have one thing. 16 Bayview, there are some, there's some additional work that we need to do with them before we approve it. So, I would ask that you remove that one from the consent agenda and table it until the next...
Let me restate the consent agenda for the record. We're looking for the renewal lodging and vitre license for Camden Windward House, Drift Oceanside Inn, Frenny's Bistro, and Town Motel. Are there any objections to those? One, two, three, four, five. Not hearing any of these. Those are hereby adopted. In action items, we have an item five. We have first, a request for an approval of a six-month interim electricity contract. Audra, do you want to explain what that is for everybody's benefit?
So, as we've discussed before, we contract through main power options to purchase our electricity. It saves us money. You know, the alternative would be, you know, purchasing our power directly through CMP. And by purchasing through MPO, an aggregator like MPO, we're able to purchase our electricity at discount. We've been talking a lot about solar, and the landscape around solar has changed so much within the past year that, you know, I think that we're all kind of getting to a little bit of the point where we're tired of the analysis, where, you know, we want to move forward with something. But I think that, you know, we're at least six months away from doing so. So, what I'm asking is for your approval to renew our contract with MPO, and it would be the green power option. I can't tell you what the rate is because it changes so much on a day-to-day basis. So, if I were to tell you what the rate is today, it would be completely different tomorrow. It's at a lower rate than when we locked in three years ago, and it would be basically the same sort of agreement, except it's for a much shorter term. And six months would buy us some time to do some more work on figuring out what we want to do with solar and try to move that forward so that, you know, when we get to that point, we're able to transition over to a different sort of action.
The current contract we have expires when?
Expires this month. Yeah.
So, I thought. And the current rate, I believe, is nine cents a kilowatt hour.
It's about nine cents.
Which is probably market high right now.
It's very high. Nine cents is, would be very high right now. We're, you know, power prices everywhere reduced quite significantly. It is getting a little bit more expensive. It was more expensive over the summer.
So, when we enter into the agreement with them, it's a fixed, we agree on a fixed price based on whatever the market rate is at that point in time?
That day, yeah.
Okay.
The current contract we have was for three years, I believe.
Yes.
And it was fixed at nine cents a kilowatt hour.
Okay. And the difference being, if we were just to go through CMP, it's just whatever the market rate is?
Standard offer.
Without a discount?
It would be standard offer.
Right.
To go through the renewable clean energy option with MPO. That's the difference.
Okay.
Is that correct, Audra?
Yes.
Comments, select board members? Not seeing any hands raised. Do I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a six-month interim electricity contract extension.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any comments, select board? Not seeing any hands. Roll call vote. Allison?
You're muted, Allison.
I saw her say aye, but I, there she is. Thank you. Mark?
Aye.
Jenna?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, 5-0. Thank you very much. Bob was an aye also, by the way. The second action item is a request to approve parking space slash street closure for the one-way portion of Chestnut Street for the Baptist Church for a night in Bethlehem. Just for the record, this would be 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. on the weekend, the nights of Christmas by the sea. So, it's restricted to those two nights for the hours of 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Comments, select board?
I have no problem with it. I think they do a marvelous job each year. I hope that they can find a way to do the same kind of presentation they've done every year, which is quite amazing, and keep it safe for people.
Great. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the parking space street closure for Chestnut Street Baptist Church for a night in Bethlehem on the two nights of Christmas by the sea.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Comments, discussion? Not seeing any hands. Roll call vote. Jenna?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob. Bob, aye also. 5-0. I keep forgetting to say that part. Last item on action items is to decide on committee, commission, and to a lesser extent, board meeting format. But we need to make it clear what we're permitting and not permitting at this point during this virus situation. Recommendations from the board? Mark?
I'll start. I was going, during my report, I'm going to speak about what's been going on with COVID lately. But I think with the uptick in it, as they've recommended, it probably remains the best idea for us to do these meetings by Zoom. It's a little bit harder to hear and understand when people are in the same room wearing masks. And I think that as long as we continue, you know, Zoom, as long as Zoom allows us to communicate properly, we go back to individual spaces instead of sort of meeting in the middle ground. And I believe, I think all the committees should meet that way as well, and the commissions as well. Unless, I know the Charter Commission has a problem with, one of their members doesn't have any computer access, so they've been meeting in the auditorium at the Opera House, which allows for proper spacing. So, if they want to continue that, I think that's relatively safe.
Yeah, I basically agree with Mark. Bob and I actually had a really lengthy conversation, was it yesterday, about, you know, ways to continue to improve our entire system so that we can both, you know, learn from this, take this as an opportunity, the ability to do things virtually, get better, you know, at that as a town. That's something that I'm just personally actually really excited about, the opportunity that this presents. And so, I do really want to see us trying to do our very best we can, but then also realizing that, you know, we do have this problem when, with, you know, with this hybrid system, we haven't perfected that yet, and we haven't perfected a lot of elements of the virtual system. We also haven't perfected the in-person system, never really did. So, I would feel like at this point, we should be encouraging virtual only, but also in the background, Bob and I are going to try to do some work to figure out what we can do to make this a really good hybrid system. So, ideally, we would have it so flexible that people could do kind of whatever they wish, and that wouldn't impact the quality of the meeting experience for anybody. I don't think we're quite there yet, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I feel a little differently about the Charter Commission. My main concern is not, it's of course related to the safety and the comfort of the committee members themselves, but also in terms of accessibility for the public and setting up a system that makes it easy so that if somebody all of a sudden is feeling a little bit sick, hasn't had a chance to get a COVID test, that there is, if it's an in-person-only meeting, that immediately excludes somebody who's just trying to be responsible. I actually got a COVID test for the sole purpose of being able to attend the Charter Commission meeting with a clear conscience. I would have ended up getting one anyway, but I tried to do it really fast because of that reason, there are currently people, I believe, that are not participating in those meetings because they don't quite feel comfortable. So, I think we should allocate resources as necessary to make sure that we could do the virtual system well. But the amount of staff time going in, there's of course a lot of staff time for the virtual system, but there's maybe even more when we try to do this in-person system, and then we're inadvertently excluding some other people as well. So, Bob and I talked about some options, about maybe even just taking a little bit of money and having some extra devices on hand for people. That's what they do for the, you know, the entire school system. There are these, you know, not top-of-the-line iPads, but capable iPads that can be borrowed as needed. And they could be preloaded with Zoom and ready to go. And if somebody doesn't have an internet connection at their house, they could even just, you know, sit outside in their car if they wanted to. I do want to work to make that in-person option available, too. But, anyway, that was a little bit lengthy, but, yeah.
But poignant, but very poignant. Taylor has hinted for us, and Jenna?
I appreciate your lengthiness, Allison. I think you hit the nail on the head. I had a chance to talk to Audra about this a couple of days ago, and I've been thinking a lot about it as well, obviously, with an uptick in COVID, and trying to figure out, you know, the reality is, we don't realistically know how long we're going to be forced to find alternative ways to meet. We all sort of hope it's early next year, but that's just, you know, being optimistic. So, I agree that I think we should all meet boards, committees, you know, town-sanctioned organizations should be meeting virtually. And I think I share Allison's concern about the Charter Commission from a little bit of a different angle. I think we need to be equitable about the decision-making process, and we can't say that one body can meet virtually, or can meet in the auditorium, because then all the committees are going to want to do that if they don't want to meet virtually. So, I feel like we need to be consistent. And I'm really glad to hear that we're already working on trying to figure out how we can make this hybrid system work, because I do think it would be good to be able to set a way up so that, you know, we do live in the 21st century. We've been well into it for some time, actually. But, you know, you hate to exclude people who are not tech wizards. So, until we have that figured out, I think we need to be as accommodating as possible. But I feel like virtual only is the way to go for now, and then working on that, making hybrid, you know, efficient in the background, seems like it makes a lot of sense to me. Jenna?
So, Taylor and Allison essentially hit the nail on the head with what I would say. And the comment that I was going to add to Allison's description was, I think it needs to be consistent, which is something that Taylor said. I think that in the interest of safety, you know, I'd be remiss not to say, you know, I'm terribly sorry to hear about this selectman in moral who contracted COVID and passed away. I think we need to really preserve, at this juncture, when we have 150 new cases or so today, we need to be preparing for a good hybrid system. We need to be kind of settling into doing this virtually, but creating the kinds of access that Allison and Taylor are discussing. But I think that creating a consistent policy across the board is really important, both for participants and for functionality in the public.
I will, I will agree with the opportunity that Allison has described about getting some iPads and allowing people that don't have the capability to loan them the capability to join the meetings. I think it's an excellent idea, and I think it's a great compromise. So, I would then vote to go all digital for everyone.
Hey, I understand, and I think consistency is important. I propose that we continue with a modified, you know, hybrid as we have it now, so we can continue to improve it. As Allison and I discussed, we don't have to have anybody but one person in this room to affect that. But otherwise, we can't test out some of the things that I'm kind of excited about, that Allison and I talked about in terms of improving this hybrid, because we have an opportunity here to do something special, which would allow us, if we get there, to be able to allow limited public input, I'm sorry, involvement for those who aren't electronic, using iPads potentially, or even allowing a person or so into this room only for public input. So, we don't exclude anybody. We have that ability now. So, that's the only subtle adjustment, I would say, to committees and commissions. If we start splitting hairs, I think, I have to agree now, I didn't before, that we got to be careful. We don't want to over-legalize staff time for the Opera House or for this even. But this is only twice a month, and I think we can handle that part. And I think we can get there. So, with that small, you know, quivocation, I think it's the only way. Now, if, if in fact, some group meeting, it doesn't work, we may have to make adjustments for due dates on when they have to get things done. I mean, we can't be, you know, there could be situations, and the commission could be one of them. We just have to change schedules. If that's the worst-case scenario, that's the worst-case scenario. But, yeah, I agree. I think that's the way we have to do. Committees and commissions have to be consistent. We'll keep working on the hybrid. I think we're, so Allison and I met yesterday, actually, and talked through a lot of things. At first, I was not in favor of, but I think collective creativity, it's getting kind of exciting. I think we have an opportunity to do something different, including with the iPads, including getting everybody to have the opportunity to say something by one or two or three mechanisms safely, and not requiring anybody to be in person. It doesn't feel safe being in person. So, with that, I think that's the way we'll go ahead. Allison?
Yeah, I definitely agree with everything that I think you said, because it's really difficult to understand you.
Well, I don't speak very well, Allison.
And that's not, like I, and I know, this is what we talked about. I think for the YouTube viewers right now, they can probably hear you quite well. For those of us on Zoom, the audio quality is very diminished. And I haven't talked to Juniper and Bruce a little bit. I think we know why that is, because their microphone is different and a lot of those things. But, so, I do think there's, you know, the fact that we all see this, you know, some of us see it very similarly, and some of us see it a little differently. And that's true in the town, too. And so, the fact that, you know, Bob is willing and able and eager to be in that conference room and can be, you know, for the townspeople to have a little bit of knowledge that, okay, well, if you really can't figure anything out, you have, your computer crashes, and all of these things go wrong, to be able to know that Bob is going to be in that conference room, and you can come down and make that work. And, I mean, I think if we can just make some slight improvements to the system, that, you know, could be a really great thing, and it's a role not all of us want to fill. But I think we're on our way to making it work, and at least we've reached an agreement about those committees, so.
And of course, through the public listening, we will, as we develop these, like we have today, on top of our agenda, we have certain criterion for participating in our current mode. We'll do the same thing when we get to any, you know, abilities to do whatever for the public. And we'll, but we have to work on that, and it's going to take us a little bit of time, equipment-wise, as Allison mentioned. But, but I think, you know, again, I had mixed emotions about committees and commissions because of the governor's, you know, restrictions. But I think you're right. We're, by the way, in my opinion, this is not going to last a couple of months. We're talking about a year here. That's just my personal feeling. I don't have a crystal ball, but I just, I just feel that we have to plan on it for being the long term. We have to continue to try to do the best we can with what we have. And I think we have. I think we've tried this, and it has its frailties with sound, as Allison mentioned, because this is a meeting room, not a conference room. That's the way it's set up. And we, for the future, I think it'd be a benefit for us to do it in any event, even when, luckily, we get past this, this virus situation. But with that, I think we're all on the same page. Is it pretty clear to you, Audra, or Janice, as to what your response to committees and commissions is?
Yes, so, I'm going to tell them all, we're all, we're, it's meeting by Zoom exclusively. No one's to physically come in for meetings. And, you know, we'll give them support in setting up the Zoom meetings and making sure it's recorded on YouTube.
And as I said, I would only qualify that to say if they perceive, because they're cross-section, some significant problems, they just need to let you know what those are.
Yes, and we'll, we'll get on ordering some sort of tablet and getting it set up so that they can be loaned out to committee members or members of the public who might need them.
Yeah, we'll address that with you next week, if you don't mind.
Right, and we can, and I know that this is sort of getting into the select board side of things, but we could sort of start getting word out that people who want...
side of things, but we could sort of start getting word out that people who want, or who feel like they need to come and, um, comment in person or want to participate in person to sign up with Janice. And that might be a method going forward to make sure that everybody can participate, but we're not compromising anybody's safety by letting too many people into this room.
Absolutely, absolutely. Allison, go ahead.
I mean, let's, let's just try to not, I think there does need to be a process around that. Um, the school board, I spent a lot of time researching what everyone else was doing. Um, the school board was letting people come in. Um, I'm not sure if they decided to stick with that because when I asked about it, most of the other, most of the board members weren't aware that that was even an option. It had, they had a whole long process where if you're a member of the public, you want to go to a school board meeting, you have to get to the door, um, scan a QR code, um, do a health check. Um, and so, especially, I think, you know, if it's, if it's just Bob or if it's just a couple willing people that are in there and want to welcome in any member of the public that wants to come, that's, that's fine. But we also have staff that are operating, um, the camera, the, I think we should hold off before we just start trying to get the word out that the public can come in. I think we should try to improve first. I would think that would be, you know, in a, in a couple meetings, possibly, if we come up with a system. But that's the first thing that needs to be in place, is trying to do a better job of making it easier for people to ask those things.
Yep.
Virtually.
Yep.
I just wouldn't want to have to walk it back. I don't think we want to be getting the word out about public meetings.
Yeah, I, I.
At this moment.
Allison, I would agree. I, I certainly don't want to rush anything out and cause ourselves a problem by not, so probably, Audra, by the December meetings, I would love to have this in place. But, uh, we can talk about it, but November 17th may be a little quick.
I mean, I don't think anyone's clamoring to get in here. So that's the good news. Um, yeah, I think, I think we can make, I think we can make it work with, uh, what we're doing now and loaning out some tablets or whatever.
I think it's great. I think most importantly, we've agreed that committees, commissions are going to be Zoom. And if there's a problem with that, in terms of what they're trying to accomplish, they need to tell us that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and I also think that, you know, I, I know everyone is very eager to meet again, um, excited about the idea of sort of getting back to things as, you know, business as usual. Um, but I think with committees, one of the ways that we can make this more manageable for everyone is if we're, if there are specific tasks or specific items that, that either the select board or staff needs some committee guidance on, um, that is a good reason to have a meeting. I think just sort of like chewing over standing, and I, and I, believe me, I appreciate the, um, you know, the want to meet. But I think unless there's specific business that, that they need to sort of be there to advise on or make some sort of decision on, we really should hold off on, on meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, if you read.
Just because it really, it really is, it can get to a point where it's pretty overwhelming for people who are setting up these meetings and making sure they run, making sure everything broadcasts.
Yep. No, you're, I, I would agree. I, so I reread and reread some of the state guidance in this area of meetings and understanding that we're going virtual in this emergency declaration period. They very clearly stated that if something is not essential to be done right now, perhaps you should think about, no, they were referring to public hearings in town, special town meetings, but this goes across the spectrum, to your point. If there's something that they're working on that, you know, is, it really should be something we need to know now. If we, if we're asking a committee, we have done that.
Yeah, like the Harbor Committee, they've got a number of items that we, we certainly need some guidance and feedback on. You know, there have been a few that we've.
There are a few.
We've specifically said, we need you to meet and advise us on X, Y, or Z. I think that that's, that's great. But I think some of, um, you know, some of the more kind of standing procedural things that maybe there, there isn't like an immediate action or decision or something like that. That's maybe where they could hold off until we get to that point.
The only way to really accomplish that, in my mind, is if we have the chairs, when they're requesting the Zoom meeting, to provide, um, an agenda of which items they consider are essential to be being worked on.
I mean, if, if.
I can't make out everything, Bob. I can't, and if it gets, I don't need to hear every word, but is anybody else, is it, is it just me or?
No, it's, it's very my fault, the mask. It's one of my problems with meeting in the main room because we have to wear masks. People are not quite as articulate as, as they could be without the mask. It's, it's a problem.
Okay.
Every mask is different.
That's true. That's true. I'll, I'll try to hold, I'll try to hold the mask a little away. Does that help?
Yes.
All right. I'm still buffling all of my germs. Um, but Allison, did you have a comment you wanted to make, or did just?
Well, I, I can't quite tell if you're saying anything, like, so I could hear Audra, actually. Okay. Um, I, I worry about, um, the trying to delineate between essential and non-essential committee work. Um, I, I basically agree with Audra in some ways. But, um, like, for instance, I was a part of a historic resources committee meeting. Um, it had immediately occurred to me ahead of that meeting that they were doing things that the, like, the select board needed them to do. It was the first meeting that they had gotten together since this all started. Um, we worked out a couple audio problems, and then it was, um, it was actually the first meeting that they livestreamed. It went well. And there were a bunch of things that I had forgotten about, like the demolition delay ordinance and the fact that they're supposed to help administer some of that. Um, there's, and there's a, a woman that had volunteered to work on the Jacob Davs Historic District. And, um, there were some updates that, it was fairly important, um, that we heard it all. It wasn't, uh, I was able to do the meeting, do the Zoom part of it. Um, Juniper had to step in and lend her computer because of a, of a microphone issue, which, um, is the kind of thing we're hoping to prevent by having a few tablets ready to go. But I, I think the process of trying to decide whether it's, it's a, an essential committee meeting or a non-essential committee meeting could become just as time-consuming as setting up the meeting. Um, you know, I'm just picturing how it might go, that a committee would come and say to Janice, can we do a meeting? And she'd have to say, well, I have to check with the select board on whether it's, it just, I don't know. I think I am really happy to help with the, um, like, ease the staff burden of just starting meetings and that kind of thing. Um, and I agree that in general with committees, um, in order for us to be able to keep track of things and to make sure that, um, we're not saddling staff with too many endeavors, we, it, it does kind of need to get back to the original intent of committees, which was to advise the select board on specific things as needed by the select board. But I think it's a little bit of a fine line, and I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't really want to shut down what they're doing right now if they can get a meeting together and, um, but I think that we could let them know, you know, this is, there is a lot going on. There is a lot of additional work because of, um, COVID. And so, um, we need to be cautious about coming up with, with new initiatives that have never even been discussed, you know, with, that, you know, as far as what works.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Taylor?
Um, yeah, to me, to me, I think that it seems like the answer is that we're just sending the message to committees that there is no expectation or need for them to have a standing meeting in place unless they have new business to accomplish. Um, if they have new business to accomplish and they need to have a meeting, then have a meeting. It has to be virtual, so that removes the need for an essential versus non-essential.
Yep.
Um, and if there's a committee or a group that, like, we feel like is meeting regularly and doesn't need to be and is becoming a drain on staff, then just bring it up to us and we'll adjudicate that down the road if we need to.
Yeah, that, that adds to the, um, you know, as liaison, I have no problem with talking to committees I'm liaison with about just that matter. And just say, you know, and that, maybe that's where it rests. Because I, I don't expect us to come back to the select board for approval of what they're working on. We don't have the time. We don't have enough meetings to do that kind of thing. We've got to do it more cleverly. And I think that we have to rely on us, we, uh, select board members as liaison to just be smart. That's all. So, um, is that clear enough?
I think that, yeah, that would be helpful.
I think, I, I think I can do a better jobs with liaison as I did recently with one committee, um, because they were going someplace I didn't think was going to be necessary. And they, they all agreed. They, they all agreed. It was, it was easy, uh, because they're all a great bunch of people. So, well, that's the way we'll proceed, if it's okay with you.
That'd be great.
Great, thank you. Um, moving on to discussion items, I'm just going to flip one here and talk about the discussion about the, about the process for the tannery proposals that we received recently, uh, for the, um, I don't want to use the word development because it's a four-letter word, but the, any modifications that may occur at the tannery site. Um, who wants to lead? You?
I'll, I'll lead this off. Um, so this is, I've, to be honest, I feel, I apologize. This is one that I wanted to kind of sit down and really, you know, hammer out a draft for you all of, you know, how you might want to, um, consider this rolling out. But just with everything that's been going on, a lot of, um, time has gotten away from us. So, you know, really, I think at this stage, I don't have any sort of detailed recommendation for you on how this could all go. Um, but I do think sort of like a, a three-phase process where, um, you're kind of identifying either a committee or maybe a working group. Um, you know, that, that's, that's one of those details that just haven't had time to hammer out. To do sort of the initial review of all the proposals that you received, kind of the next phase, you know, interviews or, um, some sort of question and answer with the, uh, groups that have submitted proposals. So you can get some clarity on what it is they've presented, where there are areas, um, where adjustments could be made, um, where you need more information, that, that sort of thing. And then the third phase is more of, um, the decision-making phase by the select board on what you want to submit to voters for ultimate approval. Um, you know, might be what you want to consider doing. Um, so, uh, you know, like I said, not, not too much detail. There's a lot of detail within that kind of framework that you might want to work out. But I think a, a kind of three-phase process that has, has that kind of.
Three, three phases, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, okay, um, good. Yeah, I'm not sure, um, we'll discuss that. But I, um, having to dot every i and cross every t right at this point in time, we just really should come up with a process that we start planning. Because, you know, before we know it, it's going to be March, and we're going to be talking about doing something that needs to go to June ballot. Um, you know, obviously, we don't want to be dragging this thing on forever. Um.
So I guess before, does, just to get some, um.
Yep.
Direction from the board, does that kind of sound broadly like a framework that you would like, you know, like to, um.
Go ahead, Taylor.
You know, kind of flesh out?
Good question.
Um, uh, yes, broadly, broadly, that does make sense to me. I think my, I, I worry about, when we talk about working groups and, you know, bringing more people into the decision-making bubble, um, I worry about, with anything, kicking the can down the road or just complicating the process more. Um, so I would want to be super clear about how, you know, the, the scope that we get, if we, if we do bring more people in to help us decision, or at least, you know, come up with some data points to evaluate each of the proposals. Um, I will think we should be really specific with the scope because we've already had, um, more than one working group work on the tannery specifically. And I would hate to see it bleed into another kind of, um.
Right.
I'd just hate to see that happen. So, um, and my only, my only caveat that, that I feel strongly about is that I think that in, in our evaluation holistically, that we should really be thinking about the priorities that the select board has set for things that we want to see worked on in the town, and that that should be very much tied to the decisioning of how that property moves forward.
Good. Um, Allison?
Yeah, um, I mean, I'm personally really excited about the fact that, not any one proposal in particular, but just the fact that we've finally gotten to the point where we can present options, um, real and different options to the community. And I want to make sure that we don't, um, ruin it by getting the process wrong, but then also not, you know, ruin it, ruin it by just being paralyzed and kicking the can down the road to fifteen million working groups, um, which I think is essentially one of the major mistakes that has been made, um, in the past. So, um, the major need to involve others, my tendency is to think that CDAC should play some sort of an initial role because they work, um, on putting the RFP together. And, um, I'm not sure if we on that group is ready and willing to go at this time, but I do think that they could help us, um, to review and maybe summarize some of the responses and point out areas where there should be questions or follow-ups. And, you know, potentially even more than that. But that bringing in, that, that would be a good way to bring in some of the, the past knowledge about what has gotten up here. And then, um, then it should, you know, the point is to try and make sure that the community can really understand so that we can get useful input from the rest of the community and that the questions that broadly everyone feels should be asked of the applicants, um, do get asked.
Mm-hmm.
And then, but I, I am happy to spend a little bit more time, um, hammering that out, maybe until, um, next time. But I don't, I don't want to just put it out there and say, let's, you know, tannery working group phase three to evaluate.
No.
I don't think that makes sense.
Three.
But, um, I do think we have some internal knowledge, um, that we would be, you know, with existing committees, um, that we would be smart to, to task them, yeah.
All right. Um, um, Mark, did you have your hand up?
Well, yeah, but I'd like to hear what Jeremy has first, and then I.
All right, all right, Jeremy, go ahead.
Eric, thanks. Um, I, I absolutely agree with, um, you know, the broad, the process that Audra laid out, and I think that's appropriate. Um, I think, and I agree getting bogged down in a committee or a work group. Um, I, you all are making great, um, comments about that and your perspective on that. I will say, this, what, what, um, what normally would happen is someone would take or a group would take, and if you had a bigger staff, if this was a, you know, city government, you'd have staff that would review the proposals, and they would look at them for consistency with the RFP and do a matrix on the evaluation criteria, which was included in the RFP. I mean, we, you had asked me to open up the RFP as broadly as possible, to include as much as possible. And, and, you know, I did that. Um, and we have four proposals. And again, everyone that submitted a proposal received, responded to an RFP. That's laid out. Um, everyone knows what they're supposed to submit and what the evaluation criteria is. And, um, so I think what this will, a group, a committee from CDAC or a task force from CDAC, because they've been involved, um, is the best way to go and have it focused on that issue only. You're just, that group should, and I can, I'd be staff to that, um, but we ought to review it, um, again, each proposal for consistency with the RFP requirements and the evaluation criteria. And then submit a matrix report to you folks, and then you move it forward down the process.
Okay.
That is the, I think, the, the best way to go. Um, and it's an open process.
Mm-hmm.
It's very straightforward because it's not, there's no, nothing can be loosey-goosey on this because the RFP asked for specific things and had evaluation criteria.
Right.
Yes, the town has, um, competing interests, and you have competing desires to accomplish in town. Affordable housing, you know, expanding the economy, you've got a lot of dealing with housing issues. I mean, you have a lot of things that are your priorities and are town priorities. And, um, it's all laid out there, and I, I think that's what you should do more forward.
Right, right.
That would be definitely my recommendation.
All right. Marco?
Um, I, I think to summarize, I think it's important that we get, uh, a few people with expertise to look over this, uh, and present us some of the things that we are, as individuals, may not know and may need to, to hear. Um, I think that the thing to remember is that the town will vote on it overall. We don't need to get a whole town's worth of people involved. on it overall. We don't need to get a whole town's worth of people involved ahead of time because they're going to vote on it at the end. So getting some expertise now, I think is good and then we can make a decision and the town will make the final decision. The one thing I wanted to ask Jeremy is where are we with all the EPA stuff?
All right, that's it.
How is that going to involve this?
Yeah, that's a great point, Mark. And so, you know, unfortunately, things are where we are in time-wise. And where we are with town meeting and how a vote has to happen and you can't do town meeting votes, special town meeting votes right now because they have to be paper ballots and it's all, you know, it's a really very interesting process. And so the grant has to be completed by October 1st of next year. So we can, by October of next year, we will get a six-month extension, there's no question about that. The reality is, is that the process that has to play out in terms of the ABCA and the CRP, which is the Community Relations Plan and the Alternative Round Field Assessment Plan that looks at different alternatives, is those are quite lengthy process and are a public process. And there are, you know, requirements for public notice and public comment and these things take time. And so to try to do a cleanup after the town votes, at the same time as the developer is developing their site and have that all finalized by October of next year with a six-month extension, the reality is that's not really going to happen. So what likely will happen is ransom will, because ransom has already been made aware of, there are qualified environmental professionals doing the engineering on the cleanup. They are aware of the proposals that we have, that we have four proposals and we have a park, park users, park use in one, we've got residential in, you know, three different proposals, technically two, Habitat and Northland are residential proposals. And then you have a more commercial along with park user type thing on the Mike Mullin project proposals. So, and the park user on the Friends of Tannery Park. So we have park user, residential user, and a commercial or business user. And that, those are technical terms for EPA's perspective.
Right.
So what ransom will do is likely prepare an ABCA and a Community Relations Plan that accounts for all of those uses on the upland area. And they'll design a cap, which we likely will have to implement, which will likely be a little bit of soil removal, if you remember, a little bit of soil removal, and likely just doing landscaping or pavement in certain areas. And landscaping, I mean, bringing in, you know, certain depth of material to cover the site. And we'll get a cleanup and we'll go through that process because they'll be able to design it and we'll have environmental covenants and et cetera on the property and we'll go through the VRAP process and the certificate of completion with the DEP. We'll get that done within the timeframe that we need to. And then, but that developer is going to know and hopefully if we can move forward in June and the town votes on it and everyone's happy with this, you know, proposed use there, as they're moving forward, they can try to amend their plan a little bit to facilitate something that that entity would like, whether it be parking, slab, or landscaping areas.
Right.
And they can include that in that cleanup cap. But in reality, probably what's going to happen is we're going to cap the site and then that developer is going to know where we are, right? We have two of these developers or two proposals that have experienced use in ground, doing field work. So they understand the constraints that they're working under. Likely, they'll just then, who knows what happens, right, with the town votes on, but if it's one of those two entities, they'll come in, or if it's the Tannery or Habitat people, they'll come in understanding what they need to do, is they need to hire their own consultants to come in and then modify the VRAP and the cleanup that we did, which is standard protocol.
Right, right.
They'll understand, they know what certain areas the uses are and what kind of environmental separations, if you will, need to be between the contaminated areas.
Right. Jeremy, isn't the bottom line of this that neither action that's going with whatever developer idea and also the EPA thing will move ahead in parallel, one is not going to get in the way of the other?
Yeah, no, we can't let one get in the way of the other, right? Which is not possible because we have to have that cleanup done by October and then a six-month extension. If we can finagle, if the developer that the town votes on and can work within their schedule
Right.
and modify that ABCA to include that, any features that that proposal requires and we can make that part of the cap, we'll do that. It benefits them financially, it benefits us financially, but we have to get through that process and likely ransom's going to just have to move forward as if all of the options are on the table.
Right, okay.
We have to propose a cleanup and then that developer will have to remit, address VRAP when they move forward with their proposal.
Got it. Thanks, Jeremy. Mark, give me other comments.
Nope.
Jenna, Jenna, do you have anything? Nope.
Makes sense.
Good, yeah, that's fine. So I guess, well, first of all, to my only comment, I kind of agree with what Allison was kind of mentioning. I think we certainly need to don't create another entity. I originally thought in my mind that would be a good idea, but I think we're creating too much complication. We probably have somebody like CDAC or somebody like that who could do, but their agenda, it should be defined, as Taylor had mentioned very clearly, so they don't go off in a tangent someplace. But that, and Jeremy, you mentioned one of the biggest ones in my mind and everything I've ever been involved in in my life, the first thing you looked at was the conformance to the criterion of the RFP. It doesn't preclude if somebody didn't dot the right i, it doesn't get them thrown out, but it allows us to develop good questions for when we have the second phase, our workshop, to listen to each of the four presenters and ask intelligent questions of their, the intent of their RFP and get clarity. And it'll help us, I believe, in the third phase to make a, hopefully, you know, the best decision for the town. But I also agree, and want to emphasize what Taylor said about priorities that we've established, but we also have a comprehensive plan that has certain criteria that this town has created and we should be cognizant of how, whichever way we go, mates with the elements of the comprehensive plan. So I guess the question is, perhaps we could, for the first phase, which would be the one we're going to do obviously first, is to have some kind of written-up criterion of what they're going to work on and how, you know, agenda for that group. Does that make sense to start with that?
Yeah, I mean, Jeremy and I can sort of create that matrix to give to them to evaluate proposals against, and that would all be pulled directly from what was in the RFP.
Okay. And I'm going to preclude that group from, because it's never black and white, what questions we might want to address in step two.
Well, like, I think, for example, so say you get a proposal and it doesn't conform with like, you know, like a specific criteria, maybe what comes out of it is CDAC recommends that when you interview
Exactly.
whatever, whichever applicant, you ask about why, you know, why they didn't address this in their proposal or like what do they see as a way to address X, Y, or Z. You know, I think there's a way you can do it so that, you know, it gives you a tool for getting more information and more targeted information.
Through that process, the way you're describing that, Audrey, would it be typical for us to allow one of those groups to amend their proposal based on the discussions that we have with them? Or do we feel like that, or I see everybody kind of making different cringey faces.
I'd be a little...
So I'm curious what the, what, like, maybe, I'm just curious what the, you know, what is orthodox and what is not, because I suspect that's going to come up.
Good question, excellent question. But typically, it depends on probably what it is. A clarification of an item is one thing, and it's a gray zone. It's a big gray zone. Jeremy, you know this, Bear and...
I guess what I'm anticipating is that we're going to, you know, CDAC or whomever will do its thing and then we get to this sort of workshop slash presentation area where we'll, you know, perhaps we ask some poignant questions that might point out a glaring hole in a proposal that they may be able to or want to offer an amendment to, maybe it's easy, maybe it's not. You know, I'm just, I don't think we answer that tonight. I just think it's food for thought.
That's a very good, Allison, go ahead.
I think we should absolutely, I mean, I would like to weigh in on that tonight because the public process that we have on virtually everything is designed to be able to improve, whether it was documents that the town puts out, policies, ordinances, we never say with the things that we come up with, with proposals that we come up with for the public, we never say, sorry, it's yes or no. We're not going to change this thing, this or that. So I think to say, sorry, whatever you put in your proposal is the final answer. I think for all four of the applicants or proposals, that would be unfair and would a disservice to the community. You know, in perfect unicorn land, we might think, well, maybe there's some way that we can all just compromise with all of them. There's something for everybody. I'm not going to try to be extra naive and say that's going to happen, but we shouldn't, if things like that can happen through some kind of a process, if one of the applicants wants to say, hey, I guess, you know, we could do our part, there's only half of this over here, or we could, what if, you know, put in some housing over here or, I don't want to get too specific.
Yeah, right, right.
But, I mean, we've got, it could get complicated, but
Yep, uh-oh.
It also could really complicate things, ridiculous position just to take if it all needs to be
Good points.
Exactly as it was presented in our original...
Right. Good points, Allison. Taylor, you had your hand up again?
Yeah, the heating's going off, so sorry about that. I agree with you, Allison. I kind of asked a question because I'm curious what, you know, what reality is. I'm not going to weigh in on my feelings on specific proposals tonight, but I, like, I do suspect that, like, we'll get to a point where somebody might want to change thing and ultimately that does make it better for the community.
You're correct.
The risk we run is
You're correct.
how much longer does that make the process? Because I would like to get this done by June as well. So I just think it's smart for us to, like...
I would say that, you know, you can absolutely ask for changes, but you're going to want some really clear parameters around that, so it's fair and...
Right. I think we all agree in the concept of what you're talking about in terms of allowing change.
But I do think as part of that review process and review against the criteria, it'll become clearer to everybody what are changes that are sort of acceptable to allow to be made and fair across the board and what aren't.
Right. At what point does it become a completely new proposal?
Absolutely. So, does it sound like the board, I'm hearing the board's talking about developing this matrix, because does the board want that to come back on November 17th to the board? Is that what I'm hearing? For phase one?
You mean, I don't simply, I would want to be careful about micromanaging everything too much. And we're going to approve a matrix that then this group is going to look at it.
Yep.
The beauty of getting a little bit of expertise is that, yeah, I think the point was that tonight we weren't quite ready to lay out every single little minute of every detail.
Right.
Kind of talking about some broad things.
Right.
So maybe what comes back next, because you've given, I think you've given us some really good, specific direction.
Okay.
We will have that kind of more detailed outline of how the process is going to go.
Right.
So then we can come back to you and you can approve that and that's sort of what we work off from.
That's what I'm asking.
And
That's what I was asking.
Let me just go forward with that.
Perfect. I like it. I'd like it too. All right, with that, Malou, you've got the discussion going on. And Audrey, you have this, well, we call it a priority, but it's about the housing affordability and identifying strategies. Could you briefly describe the information you have and what you expect from us tonight?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked about housing affordability and identifying sort of the, some of the underlying issues so you could better target strategies for addressing those issues. And I don't have the data in any sort of format where, you know, you can all look at it and really chew over it, but I guess to cut to the chase, it became very clear to me through looking at census data around vacancy and occupancy rates over time and all that was available to me through census data was up to 2018. That's the last year that the American Community Survey data was published around housing and occupants and that sort of thing. That the impact of short-term rentals on the availability of rental units in Camden is an incredibly significant factor in our housing stock or lack thereof.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I can give all the data to you and sort of, you know, kind of show it to you, but it's very clear when you look at it that that, more so than any other community in Knox County, and I can go into great detail on this, but like I said, I don't have it all laid out tonight where I can kind of go through step by step and show you. But I think that that's just like, to cut to the chase, that's sort of like the most prevalent issue when you're looking at data that you can point to.
Okay.
And, you know, Jeremy's gotten some data from, you know, these companies that sort of aggregate short-term rental data and it has shown an exponential growth over, you know, I think it's like 2019 to 2020, was that the period, Jeremy?
Yeah, 2019, it's this year, 28% year-over-year rental unit growth on Airbnb, all air, short-term rental platforms.
Right. So that even further sort of compounds that issue that I saw just up to 2018. And what I'm talking about goes way back to 2010.
Okay.
And it's held pretty steady over the years and you just see like it, you know, increasing even more over this last sort of two-year period. So, you know, there are way, the housing picture is complicated, there's even more complicating things that have happened as a result of the pandemic and a lot of people, you know, choosing to move to this area and what that's done to the real estate market. But I think that if you want to look at sort of like a pervasive, long-term issue, you know, sort of the vacation rental market is certainly one of them.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that, you know, if we want to kind of look at strategies for, you know, addressing housing affordability issues, I think that's the first thing as a community we should be looking at and trying to figure out, how do we get our arms around this?
I see.
And, you know, we've done a little bit of work on this in the past, but, you know, there wasn't a lot of certainty as to what the scope of the issue was. So, you know, I just, we don't have anything prepared tonight. I don't think we're at a point where any of you are even close to being able to make a decision, but, you know, I think that getting a little bit of direction from you that you would like me to sort of pursue this and you'd like Jeremy and I to kind of look into options around addressing this issue, we could certainly come back. I can show you all the data, I can show you that, like, how it's kind of changed, hasn't really changed over time. It's pretty, it's held pretty steady until the last couple of years. And, you know, sort of options around addressing it.
Right.
Just to be the first step in kind of moving a strategy forward for addressing this particular component of housing affordability.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there tonight and just get some feedback from all of you as to whether or not you think we're on the right track with going in that direction.
So just in a brief summary, if I could, could I say that from the data that you'll share at some point in time with us, from that data, you're convinced that STR analysis and whatever actions come out of it are absolutely essential? Is that true?
Oh, you mean that the issue of vacation rentals?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. Board comments? Mark?
I don't know if it's possible to have two number one priorities, but I've said for a long time, my two priorities are dealing with the short-term rental problem and fiber broadband. And they both sort of tie into making sure that we stay a viable, four-season, year-round community. Because if we lose that year-round community, then it threatens everything else we have. And I think the broadband, and I'll talk about that in a little bit, that makes a big difference. I think this is an incredibly important situation. Cities and towns all over the world have dealt with this and we need to move it up to a major priority for us. That's how I feel. I would like to see all the information you can give me.
Thank you, Marco. Ms. Jenna?
I couldn't have said it better. I think Mark is spot-on and I think we're already a little bit on our back foot by no fault of any... a little bit on our back foot by no fault of any of the ones. We need to be kind of hitting this running, um, sprinting. I think we're, it's, it's changing. I mean, as Audra has said, it's grown exponentially over the past few years, and it's something we need to just be really, um, hitting and, and working on right now. And I would be interested in seeing all of the data and discussing all of the potential solutions, um, to benefit the community.
Ms. Allison?
Um, so, I definitely feel that something needs to be done in this area. In the past, I think that it has immediately jumped, um, to a bit of, the discussion has turned into a bit of an overreach, which with its claws, right away into homestay, potentially, um, you know, homestay being the, um, name we give to situations where somebody is living in their home and they, uh, rent out a room in that, you know, within the dwelling unit. Um, and, so, you know, there are all kinds of hybrid situations in Camden where somebody might move out of their house for a couple months during the year and do that just in order to be, you know, they go and they camp for the summer with their kids or something like that, and they try to rent out their home a little bit so they can pay the mortgage. Um, there, there are those kinds of borderline situations, um, that I would really like to be able to leave out of the conversation for right now because, um, it's going to make it too difficult to make progress. Because when we, when we cut into those kinds of things that are like, oh, I kind of, you know, can understand that, um, it's, it's gonna consume all of our time. So it's, I would, I guess, hesitate to say, okay, we're gonna look at all the data, all the possible solutions, and know everything about this before we move forward. I think we can be doing that in, um, and I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing with Mark. I would like to see everything and, and know everything, but on a parallel track, I think there is, uh, you know, we could move forward, maybe even right away, with saying that, um, for any homes that are going to be rented, um, in that vacation rental area, that, that one week, um,
Mm-hmm.
plot, um, you know, one week to one month, or really any that do not have, um, uh, a homestead exemption would be kind of the benchmark that I think might work is properties that have a homestead exemption. That is, by, you know, the way that works is that that somebody's primary residence. And so if their primary residence is getting rented out every so often as, uh, a weekly rental, then we can kind of leave them out of the discussion for now. But for the rest of them, then we could do a, um, a licensing registration requirement and not, I mean, you know, not with part of the recommendation of the previous, um, task force or whatever.
Okay.
The Law and Alliance and.
Okay.
The Law and Alliance. Um, you know, not, not every single person was a Law and Alliance member there. But if we could just go ahead with that part of it and say, okay, our goal would be to get something on the ballot by June that would say, if you fall into this category, you need to, to register, um, with the town. And that would give us additional data so that we avoid having this thing where we could possibly just argue about it forever. Um, so that would be, I'd like to move forward quickly, and I will, I, Mark, I know you have been bringing this up for a long time and.
No, no, no. Actually, Taylor does first. So Taylor's next.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I, to, I would love to hear more from Audra and Jeremy, please. Um, thank you for pulling that data together. It's, um, definitely not surprising, but I think even more sort of poignant and scary now in COVID, seeing just how much the housing market has increased in the last six months, combined with the lack of availability is, um, it's really concerning. Um, and, um, I, I agree with what Allison said. Like, the issue, to me, it's common sense, right? The issue isn't people that have a primary residence and make a living in a home here, and then might leave for a few months and do a house swap, or, you know, the issue is short-term rentals that are, that are preventing people from living there primarily because it's, it's more cost-effective and makes more money. It's profitable for someone to have a short-term rental as opposed to a long-term rental. If we can do something to dissuade people from doing that, I realize that that might, um, not seem economically friendly or seem, uh, intrusive to people that, um, make a living doing that, but, um, to be perfectly honest with you, I think there's a point at which the greater good of the community comes first, and I think we're past that point.
Right.
Um, so, yeah, I'm totally supportive of moving quickly.
Thank you. Marco?
Well, I just want to be clear in what I've said for a number of years is, um, I have no concern whatsoever about people that are renting their primary residence. If it's their primary residence, I'm totally in favor of supporting them and what they're doing and, and how they're doing it. I have the biggest problem, and we've, we've had letters about it, are the empty streets, the houses that are empty most of the winter because people rented just to do short, buy it just to do short-term rentals in the summer. What I would like to see, instead of having, doing something negative, uh, for those people, find a way to encourage people to switch from short-term rentals to long-term rentals.
Exactly.
Find then a program to do that, I think. I'd rather work positively than negatively. My concern is the houses that are not primary residences. That totally is, is where my concern is.
Right.
If you're doing, you're doing your own residence, then I'm, I'm happy for you and I would support you.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Um, I, I would have to say, I, this, we all know this STR thing has been a huge thing to tackle, and every place has tried to tackle it, and they've all gone through multiple generations of, or gyrations of changes trying to affect it. So I, uh, and I'm always been a fan of what Allison mentioned, which is, if we can do something now, like, quick and dirty, no, I don't mean dirty, but, and quick and effective, we should hear that from you with what those could be.
Yeah, and, I mean, I guess.
Because you start, you're hearing, you know, myself included, have my own opinions about what should be registered and how, and all of it's been said. But if you identify or can, what we could affect in a short order, that would be really smart, in my opinion.
Right. And I, I think, you know, we're, like, this is coming from a housing affordability angle, and if you're looking at identifying issues that are contributing to that problem, it is absolutely not homestays or people who are renting out their home for maybe two weeks a year.
Right.
That is not the issue.
Right.
So I think, and, and we want to solve this, you know, the, the, the housing affordability issue, and if that's the piece that we're trying to get to the heart of, it's those homes that are, uh, not anyone's primary residence and are only being occupied for the purpose of a vacation rental.
Investment strategies.
Yes. So that's, yeah, that is what we're gonna, we need to specifically target.
Well, I'm hearing 100% of the board is supportive.
Yes.
As a priority. Uh, what, what's, uh, one step.
We have a couple of different options that we can bring back to you and kind of explain the mechanics of what we would need to do to implement them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it is gonna, it's all gonna be, you know, um, you know, an ordinance that is gonna have to be approved by voters at town meetings. So, a good thing to start working on now. Um, none of it is really, uh, zoning ordinance-related. So a lot of it, um, you know, it, we don't have to go through that multi-phase planning board to select board back and forth.
Right.
It's just something that the select board can put to voters and go through your process to refine it and approve it.
But we would still have to go through our, our public, a select board public hearing and.
Yes.
Getting to warrant language to get to. It'd be nice if we could.
Right. But you have some time, and we have a few different options that you can chew over and kind of figure out how, you know, how you want to approach it, get public feedback where you think.
Right.
Appropriate and the way you think is appropriate. And we, yeah, I think we've, if we start focusing on this now, um, we could be in really good standing to have something that we've all, that's really thoughtful and very specific in targeting the housing affordability, um, problem.
Yep. Right.
Yes, crisis.
Thanks for doing all that homework. We're looking forward to relatively soon.
Yeah, it's really, it's, it's honestly, it's really, I get nerdy about this sort of thing because it's all like digging into census data and comparing us across light communities in the state, looking at us in comparison to Knox County. And it's really interesting what's going on here.
Yeah, I'm, I'm glad we have it on the forefront. I think it's, as Mark said, it's a, it's one of our 10 first priorities. But, um, but it's a big one. I, I agree.
Yeah, and this is just one strategy of many that we're going to have to look at, um, like, when you're looking at the broader picture of, um, housing affordability. So, this is only one thing. It's not a silver bullet. There's gonna be, it's like the silver buckshot thing instead.
Understood. Thanks so much. Um, onward and upward or sideways, um, select board reports, let's start with Jenna. I'm gonna go clockwise around the pictures.
I am going to pass for tonight.
Okay, good. Mark?
I am not gonna pass. I have a lot to talk about, as always. Uh, let me, let me start with, um, tying into what we were just talking about, um, in, in roundabout ways. Uh, the fiber, uh, group that, the fiber research group, work group, whatever we call it, that I've been working with, uh, is members of Rockport, Camden, uh, really up the game this, at our meeting this past week. We, uh, are going to the town managers and asking them to, uh, move forward and doing some strong research into how to, um, take the next step. Audra may want to talk about what, what your plans to do. But, um, what we're seeing with all the people moving here, um, high-speed, high-fiber internet is so important to supporting people as we talk about, you know, doing our meetings, as we talk about people having upload speeds that can allow them to do business long distance. Um, the world has changed, and I'd like to be in the forefront of making this a great system. As we have, uh, with the new middle school, we have, uh, incredible school system, um, that's seen a lot of growth. We have, um, you know, an incredible town. The quality of life here is amazing, and I want to make sure that we can sustain that. And it all ties together, the internet, the short-term housing problems. Um, the one thing I wanted to talk about, um, sort of our short, uh, one of our short-term problems is, um, as everybody knows, the COVID virus has picked up dramatically in Maine. Um, statistics today, uh, two weeks ago in Maine, there were seven people hospitalized across the state. Right now, there are 36 people hospitalized, 12 in intensive care, two on ventilators. We had a new death today, uh, in the state. Uh, most of the summer, Knox County averaged two people with, uh, COVID over the entire summer. Right now, we have 49 active cases that's going up. So, um, I caution everybody, please, it's been a long time. It's tough. It's easy with Thanksgiving and families. We want to get together. Um, but that's where they found most, a lot of the cases are coming from, from families. They're just increasing the amount of grouping they're doing with and not being as safe. Um, and one of the reasons, um, I bring it up in terms of safety, this has cost us a tremendous, um, tremendous cost in, in businesses in town. We have a lot of empty storefronts. And now that summer's over and August seemed to be a good month for tourists, we actually did do that really well. Some of the businesses did well, said it was one of their best months. But now with those people gone, the leads are gone, um, I'd like to ask people, um, to support our local businesses as best you can. There are some incredible places doing great takeout, uh, for restaurant food. Um, and there's some great, great stores that have unique items you can't get online easily, that you can discover some great things. Uh, Christmas by the Sea was always a time when my family and I went out and visited virtually every shop that was open in town and always made some great discoveries. So I'm just talking to people. You can visit, you can take out food easily and be safe and get, wear your mask when you pick it up. You can shop safely wearing your mask and doing stuff. Please support our businesses because with all the new people coming to town, we have a very dynamic population now, and we need to make sure that we have the services to support it year-round. So that's my, my speech today.
Thank you very much, Mark. Al- oops?
One more thing I need to bring up. I had a discussion. Every year, we buy our son a snowball, uh, early pass, um, the, the, uh, discount pass that we get from the month of October. And we always end up buying it on the 31st because we never seem to remember or never seem to have the cash handy. And, uh, I mentioned this to Audra, we had a problem trying to buy the pass on a phone, on an iPhone. Uh, both my wife and I tried and couldn't do it, and so we had to switch to a computer to get it done. Because of that, we need to make sure that, um, that whatever the system, why the system wasn't working, the point should be, be fixed. And if people had problems, and because the snowball is so important and outdoor, um, outdoor exercise is gonna be such an important thing this winter, I wouldn't mind seeing our, uh, discount pass or our early season pass, um, buying period extended. We did it last year for the month of November. I think this year would make a lot of sense to do that again.
Okay. Thanks, Mark. Allison?
Um, is, I guess some of what I would say or not say would have to do with, is Audra, is there a town manager's report as part of the lineup tonight, or?
Say that again, Allison?
Is, is, is there a town manager's report as part of the lineup tonight because this is what Audra's, they're not talking.
Yes, it's, it's on the agenda, yes.
I have, I have a few items, Allison. I'm not, I don't know if it'll be the, um, same as what you were.
Well, let's, let's.
I mean, I, I basically, I think that people should hear a little bit about the downtown drainage project. Um,
Sure.
I've been following it closely, um, but I don't want to steal any of Audra's thunder.
Okay. We can always, we can always circle, yeah, we can always circle back if you have a question during the town manager's discussion about, is the project on your list?
Yeah, I was gonna, I mean, I wasn't gonna go too into detail so Allison can, um, supplement, supplement anything that.
So, it's actually, I mean, it's always really fun to me, for some reason. I'm not trying to be unsympathetic to the people that are very heavily impacted by the downtown drainage project. But it is interesting to be able to see when they dig up, um, the ground, it's an opportunity to see a lot of the history at Camden. And so, one of the things that they discovered when they dug up the public landing, um, the first part of their project, as, um, some may remember, is that they're adding, um, a drainage pipe that's going down that harbor, um, uh, walkway. And the cousins have to drill through a lot of lead, and then it's, um, there's a, a new cat station, um, that may or may not be below sea level and, um, and probably will be soon. And then there's an outlet pipe. Um, so you can see the, the last thing, there used to be a lot of stuff that happened on public landing. There were a bunch of buildings and there was huge fires. Um, and, you know, in the 1930s, it got cleaned up, um, by Nikki Fox, actually, the, the same woman that helped us design Cover Park and how all that happened. Uh, but you could actually see when they, they dug down, like, the, the layer of ash, and then you get some native soil, and then eventually you get the lead. Um, so a lot of that, public landing, um, a long time ago would have been, you know, part of the harbor, and there was mud blast and all kinds of things. But it's, I think it's important for people to know that that is gonna be, uh, a high-impact area and that all comments really can be directed to, um, the resident working with, is it, with, is it Clyde Felder or is it Ranger? That he, um, but he's a, you know, it's an M D O T project. I've gotten a lot of, um, comments and concerns about that. But so far, everybody that I've put in touch with, Mike, and I'm drawing a blank on his last name.
Clark.
Can be really responsive. Um, and there are biweekly emails going out for people that want to be on that, um, list. So anybody who wants to know how to get directly in touch with the project representatives can contact, um, Audra. And then I just wanted to say, because I know there, we got, you know, one or two comments about people, some people around the cannery area that, you know, were a little upset about that being used as a staging area. Um, but I, you know, it oftentimes doesn't make it into the, to the complaint list because the people that are happy don't say things. But there are also a number of people on that street that, that said, I'm just happy to see anything, you know, going on at the cannery. And it does, when we have these big projects in town that are, anybody who drives through Main Street right now will see that this is gonna be a pretty big impact to some of our downtown businesses that are already hurting. It's important that we're able to, to work with M D O T and with these companies so that they can get in and out as quickly as possible. So having a staging area is important. And to a lot of people, making use of, of the cannery property is, you know, an ideal, a, a just affection of that property. property is, you know, an ideal, a, a just section of that property in the interim. So, I would ask, you know, residents that might be hyper-socon on that area to keep in mind that there's, there's a larger town project going on, and sometimes we all need to be a little bit flexible.
Thank you very much, Allison. Mr. Taylor?
I'm just gonna thank everybody that worked the polls yesterday in town. I know everything went pretty smoothly, considering the historicness of this year, and I'm just very proud and thankful for everyone that spent time in the late hours counting ballots and making us all look good. Thank you.
Well, I would have to, I was gonna comment the same thing. The last two elections have a phenomenal amount of turnout thanks to, well, the magnification and justifiably so of mailing by, mail-in ballots, but it's all underscored by the process that they went through here in the town. Katrina, he's a whole gang, you all just did a phenomenal job. Because I lost count after 3,000 mail-in ballots had come in, but, you know, for a town, and we know we went way beyond that in voting, but for a town of, what, I'm guessing 4,800, 5,000 people, whatever the actual number is, that's just phenomenal, that's just phenomenal. I think the voters should be congratulated too for, for jumping in, and it's, it was nice to see, from my perspective. With that, we will turn to the town manager's report.
Yeah, so, yeah, I guess a little bit about voting, like, we thanked Elaine. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Elaine. Katrina is like the conductor of the whole event, and she does a fantastic job. She's great at what she does, but it really is, it's a team effort, you know, the fire department, Public Works, pretty much everybody that works in the town office, everyone is involved, and, you know, it really goes so smoothly because of that, and wonderful volunteers that are just so willing to be a part of it. And we have really great voters, too. Everybody who came to the polls yesterday was just very patient and very great about complying with all the weird requirements around voting because of COVID. So, thank you, everybody. Camden should be really proud about our participation and democracy. To just get back to the downtown drainage project, yeah, just to add, I did approve for Ranger, who is the contractor that's actually doing the work to use the tannery as a staging area, because it's really important that they have a close, you know, accessible area where they can, you know, put equipment, materials, and it's gonna make the project more efficient, and it's gonna have less of an impact on the people in the downtown who are already hurting, to make sure that they have, you know, a good staging area so this project can be done as efficiently as possible. So, I, I understand the concerns of people that live in that neighborhood, or some of the concerns of the people that live in that neighborhood, but this is really a question of doing something that's gonna have a benefit for the, the broader town, and asking that you please be patient while that's going on. To the project more specifically, I do have a little bit of good news about it. It was unfortunate, there was such a small amount of notice before it began for everybody to, you know, prepare for the impacts of it, but I've spoken with DOT about how we can help them get information out a little bit quicker, and, and they're gonna work with us on that. Mike Clark from Kleinfelder is the resident inspector on site, so he's kind of the on-the-ground guy, making sure the project goes smoothly. He's been wonderful to work with, really responsive, like Allison said, you know, really wants to do whatever he can to minimize the impacts but make the project go, go off efficiently and smoothly. So, you know, we'll, we'll sort of get Mike's, you know, help get information of Mike and help also make anything that he gives us to us more available to people. Some, some good news with the project generally, as everybody remembers, we need to replace the force main that goes currently across the harbor but has to be rerouted overland because of permitting issues. And so, we've been able to sort of piggyback on this project to make sure that when, you know, we're ready to put the force main in, we won't have to dig up that section of Main Street again to lay a new pipe, and we're just gonna be able to connect, you know, the, the new pipe that's gonna kind of come overland to what's, you know, what's going to be there. So, that's, that's great news. It's really positive for, you know, the fact that, you know, those shop owners and businesses aren't going to have to be impacted two years in a row by construction. It's all gonna be done this year, and that should be, you know, the end of it.
Right.
So, that's kind of, you know, the, we, we also working with Ranger on, you know, the improvements to that, to the walkway area after the, the pipe is in the ground, and that's gonna be really positive. I think that's a great collaboration as well, you know, and a lot of that, it's gonna go off a lot more smoothly, and it's gonna be a much better value to the town because we worked with them on finding a really good place to stage their equipment and materials.
Great.
So, yeah, that's, that's kind of where that project is at. We will keep everybody informed as best we can if there are any changes or there's anything that's going to be, you know, impacting everyone. I know that they did, I, I don't know if Allison, I forgot if she brought this up, but they, they have run into more ledge in that area than they anticipated, so they will be there longer than they originally thought before sort of moving more up Elm Street.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, oh, so another thing, considering, you know, the impact of the virus on the community, I'm, I'm getting some plans in place to look at, you know, sort of changing some work schedules in departments, you know, allowing people to work remotely a little more often, just doing different things to kind of maybe, you know, separate everybody out. I don't, you know, nowhere near the point, I, I think nobody wants to go down, like, go back to sort of the spring scenario, but I do think that we need to start putting plans in place in case, you know, it, it keeps getting worse like it is, to make sure that everybody can stay healthy at work. Because the last thing I want to see happening as an employer is, you know, having some sort of outbreak in the workplace here. So, I just wanted to put whatever precautions and plans in place so that all of our employees can stay healthy and we can stay operating and serving the public.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you. That's the end of your report?
That's, that's the end of it.
With that, we'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move that we, during the Select Board meeting of November 4th.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded, discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Jenna?
Yes, aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
And Bob, aye also. Thank you so much. Good input tonight, Audra, thanks, and we'll see you all in, no later than two weeks. But anyway, have a good evening, everybody be safe. Thank you.